Good evening and welcome to Monday, March 18th, 2024 City Council Meeting. Our invocation will be given in Spanish tonight by Luvette Ojeda. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Lord, we welcome you into this space. May we open our hearts and minds to other perspectives. Lord, let us hear and learn from our community. Grant us the patience to work together so that this can be a community where everyone feels welcome. Amen. Señor, te pedimos que llenes este lugar de ti y que podamos abrir nuestras mentes y nuestros corazones hacia otras perspectivas. Señor, permítenos escuchar y aprender de la comunidad, señor. Concédenos la paciencia para trabajar juntos, así que esta podría ser una comunidad en las que todos se sienten bienvenidos. Amén.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears. Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
McCandless.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
And just a reminder to all of us, please lean into the microphones because I've had some concerns about people not being here on line. So just a reminder, please speak into the microphones. For citizens' requests, we have George Powers. George, you get three minutes to speak on this because you spoke on it before. So please come forward, please state your name and your address, and you've got three minutes.
Counsel, Mayor, my name is George Powers. I live at 24626 East Truman Road. And again, I'm here to speak in opposition of vacating Coon Road. Now, Coon Road is a road that comes off of Seven Highway and goes approximately 687 feet to the west. There are two, one resident owns three parcels or four parcels there. I own one parcel that has a small frontage on Coon Road, very small. But again, it's access. If the city allows the vacation, the individual who owns all the rest of the property at that point will keep me from that part of my property. I've asked Mr. Ola, who is the owner, if he would be willing to give me a perpetual easement, and he never responded. At this point, I can only assume that that means no. The property I have is 10-acre flag lot, and I do have access off of Truman Road, but from Truman Road to the access point on Coon Road is basically 1,400 foot of rough ground. If I was going to use that bottom part of the property for crops, for livestock, I would have to bring them down that hill. As it is now, I have the right to come in there, come onto my property, and put my livestock or my crops in. What I'm asking you today is to think for a minute, if you own my property and an individual tried to keep your access away from you, I don't think you would allow it. At least you'd be in front of the council to stop it.
You have one minute, sir.
All right. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
And that brings us to the Consent Agenda. Councilmember Hobart.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any councilmembers want to pull any items off for individual consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
24718, please.
Councilmember Hobart has pulled off 24718. Anyone else? Anyone else pulling other items? Okay. With that being said, we'll go ahead and approve the consent agenda, then we'll pull off 24718. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the consent agenda.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the consent agenda is approved, six in favor, zero opposed. Councilmember Hobart, please make a motion for 24718, and then we'll have a discussion.
I would move to approve Resolution 24-718.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Councilmember, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I might address the city manager.
Please.
Mr. Walker, the opioid settlement funds, it's my understanding we have started to receive some of those, is that right?
We have begun to collect the funds per the terms of the settlement. Not all of them that will be due to us, that will come in over a period of years, but we have begun to receive some of those funds.
Do we have an idea of the total amount of money that might be collected?
I'd ask the city attorney. It's in excess of $1 million, but I, that's undervaluing it.
I understand. I'm not looking for an exact number, just curious. And over how many years about will that be collected? Is there an idea on that?
So as of October of 2023, the city had received about $210,000 from one of the settlements. We are still left to be paid 1.5 million dollars. And there are other pending matters of litigation still out there as well.
So there are other cases pending that may or may not pay out?
One other one, yes, sir. But it's significant.
Okay. So we think we may end up with about 1.7 million then total?
We're certain we will end up with at least that much.
I, thank you, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Culver. I, I've been thinking about this lately, and I'm not sure how comfortable I am with the committee structure in handing out this money. I'm not sure that it isn't our responsibility to pick a more focused use for the money. Regardless of that, I think that we're about ready to get a, potentially a new council, or we don't know who's going to be on here in three or four weeks. So I'm going to make a motion to continue this to the second meeting in April? So that, the second regular Monday night meeting in April, so that if we do have new members of council, we'll at least have a third district person. Considering the amount of funds and considering that it may still be a year or a year or two or years before we receive all the funds, I think it should involve the representative for the third district and then if there are any other council members that are new up here. So that's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion to delay it?
Second.
We've got a second, okay. Any further discussion on delaying that motion to the second meeting in April? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 24718 to delay it until the second meeting of April.
Fears.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And 24718 is postponed to the second meeting of April, six in favor, zero opposed. That'll bring us to our full public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. You were hoping for more debate, weren't you?
I forgot my track shoes.
No worries. Take your time. There's no rush.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Skanel. I'm the Community Development Director. Smoke Brewing Company will be operating within an approximately 2,300 square foot space within the Epic Sports Lodge. They are seeking a restaurant selling of intoxicating liquor by the drink as well as a retail selling of beer-only packaged liquor license. As I mentioned, they are located within the Epic Sports Lodge. There are a couple other restaurants within about 1,000 feet of this property, mainly to the north and east of this property. There is, within 300 feet, residential property, thus requiring city council approval. That concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Skanel? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please proceed on the full public hearing.
A full public hearing for the application received from Smoke Brewing Company LLC for a restaurant selling of intoxicating liquor by the drink license and a retail selling of beer only in the original package license for Smoke Brewing Company that will be located at 19310 East 50th Terrace. 24-019, first reading. Council action is requested on the application received from Smoke Brewing Company LLC for a restaurant selling of intoxicating liquor by the drink license and a retail selling of beer only in the original package license for Smoke Brewing Company that will be located at 19310 East 50th Terrace, first reading.
Okay. This is a full public hearing, so we'll have three calls for anyone who wants to speak in favor or in opposition to this public hearing and this application for Smoke Brewing Company. Anyone like to speak in favor or opposition? Anyone like to speak in favor or opposition? Anyone like to speak in favor or opposition? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
If I may address the city manager, Mr. Skanel.
Please.
Mr. Skanel, could you briefly describe what this business will be, aside from a brewing company? Is it a bar? Is it a bar and restaurant? What do they intend to do? Do you know?
So Smoke Brewing Company is a restaurant that also serves alcohol by the drink. So they had indicated within their application that approximately 70% of their sales will come from food, the other will come from the, whether that's sale of alcohol by the drink or selling of their beer that they brew at their summit location and selling here for individuals to take home.
So they just will, the only package, then packaged alcohol product they will sell are what they make themselves?
Correct.
So it'll otherwise be a restaurant there?
Yes.
And this is, what are the residences within 300 feet?
We have, just to the south, there's the multifamily, I believe that's a 55 and older community.
Did you get any, the planning commission receive any objections or anybody come to the meeting?
We have not heard any complaints from any of the surrounding property owners.
And the folks in that apartment would have had to have been given notice?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Other questions? Concerns?
Just a question on this, you know, there's a lot of youth that play sports in that sports lodge, or at least there used to be. I'm assuming there still is. So the question I have is if, what kind of limitations will be applying to those youth, you know, not being, not having undue access or any factors?
Do we need to have him repeat that because it was very difficult for me?
I think he's talking about there's a lot of youth sports that take place inside the Epic Sports Lodge. So are there precautions against children being exposed or having access to alcohol?
So the police department has a very good underage liquor enforcement where they go out on a regular basis with minors making attempts to buy. As part of that, there is teaching that goes along with all of those. Most of the establishments that we have in town have regular training. They also partner with the state on safe serve and things like that. So generally, through those, we see fairly good compliance. Our police department, through those liquor enforcement, has seen our compliance creep up to upper 80s. I think the last time when they did one of these, I think we're, for the year, I think we're over 99%, so we're doing very, very good. A few years ago, it was probably in the mid 90s, so to see that growth, that's outstanding.
Anyone else have other questions? Or discussion?
That's helpful, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Fears. Anything else?
No, I just said that's helpful. Thank you.
You bet. Okay. Anyone else have a further discussion? Okay. That'll take us to our ordinances and 24014. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24014, second reading.
I'm sorry, real quick. We got a little bit out of order there. Can we go ahead and do, just to make sure there's no issue, do the first reading? I know it kind of happened a few minutes ago.
But just to do it again, defer.
Let's go ahead and do 2419 first read one more time.
That's fine.
Before we move on.
That's fine.
We could, please, thank you.
You bet.
If I could jump in too. So on liquor licenses, we have the public hearing, and then the council considers and takes action on that liquor license. So we'll take a vote from the city council tonight.
You need a vote from the city council tonight?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
On the liquor license?
Correct.
Okay. I was seeing as a first read, so that's why I was proceeding, so please forgive me. Please read the first reading, and then we'll take a vote.
24019, first reading. Council action is requested on the application received from Smoke Brewing Company LLC for a restaurant selling of intoxicating liquor by the drink license and a retail selling of beer only in the original package license for Smoke Brewing Company that will be located at 19310 East 50th Terrace, first reading.
Any further discussion on this one? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And 24019 passes, six in favor and zero opposed. And that brings us to ordinances. So Madam City Clerk, could you read 24014, please?
24-014, second reading and ordinance amending Article 25 of Chapter 18 of the City Code by enacting new sections to add requirements for tow services, second reading. 24015, second reading and ordinance vacating.
I'll just do the first one. Because we'll have to actually debate that and then vote on it. Councilmember, do you want to have any discussion on 2414?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, can you give a brief overview of this?
I would be happy to. The council may recall that this ordinance was brought forward after some coverage about towing that was happening in the River Market area of Kansas City but involving an independence-based tow company. There was some discrepancy about, from that operator of that tow truck about whether they were subject to the rules of Kansas City, Missouri, where they were operating, or independents where they were based out of. So in response to that, just to make sure we've got clarity and continuity of operations across municipalities, this ordinance would mimic the tow truck requirements of Kansas City, Missouri, which frankly were a little bit more clearly spelled out and stringent than ours were. So it will, among the highlights, will require the tow truck companies to print the name of their company and contact information in such a way that it's readily available and noticeable to anyone that might see that. Requirements about method of payment, you know, to ensure that there wasn't any kind of gamesmanship being played about how payment was to be remitted in order to get your vehicle out of tow, and then ability to make arrangements to come and get your vehicle out of tow as well. So putting some protections in for consumers and just helping tow companies operate on the same level playing field.
Thank you. If this passes tonight, will you be notifying the tow truck companies and independents? How does that work?
We will do that. We'll certainly be proactive about that. At the time of their business license renewal, too, we would need to, you know, ensure compliance. But just in an effort to make sure we've got uniformity of operations and some good customer service, we can get some proactive communications out to each of the licensed operators.
Okay, thank you. I just want to thank you and your staff for doing, putting the work in on this, and I'm very happy with the finished product. And I'll be voting to approve. Thank you.
Anyone else have other discussion on this item? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 24014, please.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And 24014 passes, six in favor, zero opposed. 24015, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-015, second reading and ordinance vacating an existing right-of-way of all that part of Coon Road beginning at Seven Highway and heading west approximately 631 feet and reserving the same as a general utility easement, Independence, Jackson County, Missouri, second reading.
Any discussion on this? Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'm wondering if we could continue this for two weeks while we see if there is an option for finding a different resolution to this issue.
Okay.
That's my motion.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to postpone this two weeks to see if we have a different resolution. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on postponing this item for two weeks.
Fears.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
McCandless.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. 24015 is postponed for two weeks, six in favor, zero opposed. And that brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24016, first reading and ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2, General Commercial and R6, Single Family Residential, to District C2, General Commercial, for the property at 9,800 East US40 Highway, first reading. 24017, first reading and ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2, General Commercial, to District R6, Single Family Residential, for the property at 210 East College Street, first reading. 24018, first reading and ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept an amendment to a grant from Mid-America Regional Council, increasing the amount in the grant by $95,285 up to $184,702 for the city's Senior Adult Nutrition Site Program for fiscal year 2023, 2024, and execute the Amendment Community Center Services Agreement, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. This addresses Items 1.3B, 4.1D, 5.2B in the 2023-2024 Independence Action Plan, first reading.
Thank you. This brings us to councilmember comments. Councilmember Stewart, any comments?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, over last week, last Friday, the Fairmont Community Center in Tabitha Closet had its fundraiser, annual fundraiser. It was a good event, good time. Some of us showed up on the council. I appreciate that. The support is always good for Northwest Independence and also Tabitha Closet, which is having a pretty strong reach all the way out to the Forest State School District. So it was good to connect up with some friends and donors and philanthropists and everybody in Independence.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears, any comments or suggestions?
I'll see you tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were delighted to welcome seven new recruits to the fire department and celebrate a group of promotions. So that was a lovely time, a very well-attended ceremony. So I love the pageantry and celebration of the fire department. They did a nice job. The Innovation Center actually welcomed people from all around the metro to their food conferences this week and put Independence in a leadership role in that, so that was a great opportunity for us. My last item, actually here, that Mike Janey from the Examiner isn't here because I'm going to talk a little bit about newspapers. Since 2005, we've lost 2,900 newspapers in the United States, and the majority of those are neighborhood or local community newspapers, and that's 43,000 journalists. And I just encourage us to do what we can to keep a local newspaper. It's really important that you have to be able to write stories about what the city council does, about upcoming opportunities, about tax issues, about school board issues. So it's a big deal that we keep our local newspapers. So if you haven't got a subscription, I encourage you to consider that. And my last item is probably a little bit controversial. I know everybody has been thinking about the Royals and the Chiefs and this three cent sales tax. And my mom is like, how are you going to vote? I said, well, I've read everything I can, and it is just a messy, poorly put-together issue. I know that I've been less than enthusiastic about the way that the Jackson County Legislature has approached this. I think that there have been communication issues all the way around. But at the end of that, I've really thought that I don't think there's anything that we can do about what the Royals are going to choose. They're either going to choose to move or they're going to choose to move out of state. I think that ship has already sailed. So for me, the question is, what happens to Truman Sports Complex and the Chiefs? And it is so important to me that that does not become a gigantic parking lot wasteland, that I am willing to take a bet on the opportunities that the Chiefs are looking for, to be able to improve that site and bring additional opportunities to it when the Royals inevitably move. So that is just my opinion on my thinking for how I got there. I'm sure I will get lots of emails from people who are not happy, but there you go. It's the discussion of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Hobart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll direct this toward Mr. Walker, but also generally toward all your department directors. A couple, 10 days ago, week ago Friday, we attended a very moving and sad and every emotion under the sun event in the visitation and funeral for Officer Cody Allen of the Independence Police Department. And I don't need to revisit that, but what I will say, and what I would like to say, Mr. Walker, to both you and your directors and all your staff, first and foremost is that IPD, of course, showed extremely well to all the visitors that we had from out of town. But also, there was massive support from our fire department. We had, I tell you, turning down the road in front of the police station with all the IPL trucks set up, and then going down Truman Road with seemingly every available city equipment that can drive on a road parked there in honor of our fallen officer was really moving and incredibly meaningful for all of us, I'm sure. So what an incredible job by all your staff and all the employees of the city to come together and to support IPD, but to support the citizens too. The procession and the people that The procession and the people that were in the street and on the side of the road and on the side of the highway was flat-out unbelievable. But, but just a grade-A presentation and honor for all involved. And, and I was, I was thankful to, to attend. So please, for the directors that aren't here, please, please, at your meeting, please convey that, how much we genuinely and sincerely appreciate their efforts. I did want to ask you one question, because people talk about this a lot on Facebook. Do we know if the officer that was involved in the accident, the car collision during the procession, do we know anything on the outcome of that?
Yes. Fortunately, minor injuries in that individual was treated and released even before the day's events were over. So.
Okay. Good to know. So I think people will be, if they didn't know, they'll be happy to hear that.
Positive outcome, yes.
Thank you very, very much once again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. This one's going to be just so exciting. The Truman Library had the 25th anniversary of the signing of the Czech Republic, Poland, and Hungary commemorating that. And it just shows you the importance of the Truman Library to our community, because 25 years ago, Madeleine Albright came here to actually sign that and that treaty and to have them brought in. So they just had a wonderful program, and it was great to be invited to it. And the Truman Library always does everything first class, so they did that great. I also wanted to echo your, your comments, councilmember, with regards to Drexel Mack's memorial at the Jackson County. Chief, I know you came, you represented the city extremely well. You had a number of other officers there that came to honor Mr. Mack, and I just wanted to say thank you for doing that after the week you had, and then continued to show your support for other agencies. I just thought that was incredibly touching, and so I just wanted to say thank you, and you did a great job. So I appreciate you doing that. And then went to the ISD McCoy Awards. That will bring me to a question to the city manager. Mr. City Manager, is it true that you might have a child who in fact won a McCoy Award? Is, is that true?
No, that's false. McCoy Awards go to kids in high school.
Ah, however, your son was recognized for?
Some academic achievement stuff. I mean, doing his job, essentially. He went to school and got good grades, and he got an award for it. So.
And this is going to be one of his proudest moments?
I hope.
I was, I was giving you a softball, man. This is your chance to shine.
That is an hour of my life I can't have back.
Wow. All right. We'll put that on your evaluation. All right. With that being said, we did leave on some levity. With that being said, Mr. City Manager, anything else you'd like to add?
Just a couple quick highlights for the council and the community. As you all know, our, our fire chief, Doug Short, retired last July. We've been blessed to have Chief Law serving with us in an interim capacity since then. Our application period to fill that position closed last week. City received 26 applications, which is great. So we are now in the process of working our way through those applicants, and I think the community can look forward to hearing more about that here in the next couple months. So very, very exciting to see that coming along.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Okay. And Madam City Clerk, I think you've got just a couple follow-ups to complete.
The city clerk's office has received applications for reappointments to several boards and commissions. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Michael Calvert and Sam Rocher to the Tourism Commission. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, reappointing these individuals to the above board. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Twila Olsen-Hahn to the Tree Commission. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, reappointing this individual to the above board. And a recommendation has been made to reappoint Thad McCullough to the Human Relations Commission. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting of reappointing this individual to the above board. And lastly, a recommendation has been made to reappoint Les Boatwright and Mary Smeed to the Storm Water Control Sales Tax Oversight Committee. Staff requests direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting, reappointing these individuals to that board.
Thank you very much. And with that, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.